Report. Call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Select when the order health being held in townhouse auditorium April fourth, twenty twenty two, six P M. This meeting is being conducted in person remotely using video conferencing technology is authorized by Governor Baker's latest bill, which allows us to do this until July fifteenth, twenty twenty two. Please stand up. Let's lead. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting? Anybody on Zoom? Raise your hand. Use all fingers. All right. Saying none. See with the meeting, do you have any minutes? March fourteenth, twenty twenty two minutes. Need that correction.
Make a motion to approve minutes for March fourteenth, two thousand twenty two.
Second discussion. All in favor? And the next item on our agenda is the signing of the highway union contract.
Members are here.
The members are here. Round up. So.
The other guy should be here.
Make sure you tell them you got the extra stock.
All right. We moved the Patrick. We all agree with.
Should be two copies.
I appreciate your patience and the whole thing. I think it's easier than what face to face you guys were. Having been through four of these, you guys were definitely the best punch to work with, but don't tell the.
Likewise, I would like to thank the board for your patience and time and effort and also Bob. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you for your work you do every day for the town. We really appreciate it. You do a great job. We always hear compliments of the highway department. What a good job you guys are doing. It makes our job easier when we don't have to listen.
Everybody knows where the town line is because the good roads end.
They say it all the time. That's all. Thank you very much.
Should have two contracts, two copies to sign.
Make a motion to approve the contract with the highway unions for July first, twenty twenty two, extending through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second. Second. In the session. All favor. Sign this. We sign each one with a different pen and then we pass out the pen. Not really. We only get one pen.
You still think most time in the governor's office.
One copy for the union?
Yeah.
And one copy for us. And so it's the way to go. Steve Tyler?
He's on, yes.
Yes, Steve Calhoun is present.
Jessica, I'm sorry.
We know Mark, you know, expanded the operation.
This is ours.
Yeah.
They already got more good stuff.
Stick you around the exclusion list, though.
But Johnny will let that.
I've been doing one of these events for so long. I was downstairs waiting. Actually, I almost sat down.
The closest.
We said they were doing a good job. But the rest of the. We weren't quite sure.
Ones over here.
You guys did a great job.
Let these lines give it to you later. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You didn't need to.
You're signing your work. So we're good. Thank you for stopping by.
And this is not the last one for you. Stop.
Next item on the agenda is Steve Tyler update on municipal vulnerability project. Steve?
Steve? Good evening. Steve Tyler speaking. You just want me to run through and just give you my update on task by task or were there particular questions?
Run through.
All right. I'm just going to go through all of the tasks on the grant project. Task one is pollinator habitat. And that pertains to identifying some locations where green solutions can be implemented for stormwater drainage or other potential flooding or related issues. And incorporating a pollinator habitat species planting system that also does two things, you know, it does the water quality improvements intended, but also provide some pollinator species, local plants for bees and pollinators. Just to perform the functions that other plants could do, but it basically gets you two things at the same time and also plants that have been looked at by landscape architect. You know, would also help with drawing some of that water, so to speak. So the status of that is, is we've analyzed all of your covert locations. We've also looked at alternative locations proposed by both your town and the town of East Long Meadow. The goal is to select two representative sites in each town, something that's I guess visual and education, visual so that the public can see it and share the educational components. Not and also that they be projects that could be implemented in other similar situations, not necessarily roadway related. Could be residential application or industrial commercial type application. So we met with both towns and we have a couple of sites that were advancing further. Those will basically get to about the concept level later in this year. And that's the update on the pollinator habitat task. Are there any questions on that one?
Right? What's the education piece? I'm curious about that.
What the question, what's the education piece, Steve?
So the education piece would be is there would be brochures that would be put together and kind of explain what the locations can consist of and what they do, what the plant species and so forth selected. So then those pamphlets could then be you know, distributed by the town or potentially by nurseries that would want to be selling their plant stock. On how to implement the example. L I D locations.
Where are those locations going to be, Steve? I'm curious.
I wish I knew your town well off the top of my head. We looked at a location on Main Street. It was a little bit tight and constrained, a residential location that just a little bit west of Mass Autobahn Slaffing Brook. We also looked at the Laughing Brook location that was evaluated in the previous study. That has the most potential because it has area to work with. It also has some stormwater drainage from your roadway that could be treated. So we provide a water quality improvement and also alleviating some, I guess I'll say kind of flooding issues that are occurring on that property. So if that location were pursued, it would be sort of a joint relationship with the town and Mass Autobahn for that signing. The other location is on the north end of town, the upper portion of the watershed for Eastbrook. And that is just off of Glendale Road. Near corner of Glendale Road and Ridge Road. There's like a dip before you get to Ridge Road and Farm on either side. That was another location that was looked at in Hampden.
And I see that's what you, I can, I assume you don't want to hear about the East Long Meadow locations.
So Steve, these are remediations that this grant would pay for in full or is there a further charge from the town to keep doing this? If we had to pick site A, would we be responsible for input more money into this or does this grant pay the whole thing?
The grant is just coming up with concepts at this point in time, so there, there, there isn't money for full construction. The answer to, you know, implementation. It would be up to the town to implement in the future. It certainly could be a future M V P grant potential project, and that's typical of the M V P program where you do your study and analysis and you come up with a design and then that gets you to the point where you justify the design and make, be able to make a stronger case for it for the construction funding. And so there's several things in this grant that we're working on now that will basically get you to that level where you have concepts, not only these pollinator green L I D locations, but also with regard to your covert issues.
So the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, how is that divided between Hampden and East Long Meadow?
It's probably close to fifty fifty because similar activities are going on in both towns. If there's a little bit of sway, it's on the Hampden side of thing, Hampden side of things. And that comes up in other tasks where the covert investigation, we looked at just a few more coverts in Hampden than we looked at in East Long Meadow. But that was part of the strength of this application that you were teaming with another community and you had the regional component.
I'm, I'm curious, Steve, about the locations of these. I'm going to say filtration. I don't know if that's quite right, but these, these locations with these gardens that have to be maintained, et cetera. Who's maintaining those?
That would depend on the agreement. It could be the landowner or the town. I think in the situation of Laughing Brook would primarily be treating stormwater and most likely be more incumbent upon the town to maintain it. When we looked at laughing, unless you know, Laughing Brook of Glendale Road, there seem to be potential for, you know, one of the abutters to potentially maintain it, maintain, maintenance is well, it's going to be different between the two sites. But if the maintenance is a little more closely monitored in the first couple of years to make sure you get out the unwanted species and so forth, so that the species you want can thrive and dominate the area. Then there's less maintenance as time goes on, but that's also going to be subject to the abutment that them coming to the table and be willing to agree to maintain.
Oh, this grant doesn't actually put a shovel in the ground. It's all conceptual planning for this, for this money?
Correct.
This is strictly like vegetation and habitat planning. You're not bringing in any species, are you?
They would all be native. So there would be plantings brought in, but they'd be native to the area.
So when you say pollinators, though, like first thing that pops in my head is bees. You're not bringing in bees and insects and anything that would harvest the vegetation. You're just putting in the vegetation and hoping that something would take to it.
Correct.
After all, this is planned. What's our commitment to go ahead with it? As you said, you're developing these plans. Are we signing that we must implement them or that's strictly our choice at that point?
Your choice.
Task two.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the last thing.
After two. Task two. That's a student M V P planning.
Could you repeat that, please?
The, the next task you got there is a student M V P planning.
Oh, yes. So the next task is, now I know what you said. You said task two. Sorry, I turned my volume up in between there. Task two is a student M V P planning. That's primarily participation of Girls Inc. in Mass Autobahn. This was included in your grant application because scoring system gives additional points for involving an environmental justice aspect of the project. An environmental justice community might be such as a minority community or minority English proficiency community. Neither Hampden or East Long Meadow have E J communities. At least as far as map areas go that fall into this E J category. So that was part of the grant to score those points. So it's basically a participation and educational component by Girls Inc., a group out of Holyoke, an E J community. And that's going to be basically a workshop for them to understand this M V P process and educational about everything that the town went through when they developed their M V P prioritization plan. So that is currently scheduled for April twentieth at D C R's Holyoke Heritage Park. It's an event from about nine A M to two P M. And it's going to basically include those kind of educational components. So be it talk inside the building and then there'll be some displays out in the park such as a drone display, some D P W equipment display. And basically a day for the Girls Inc. students. That's in good shape and pretty much set up and lined up to go.
Any opportunity for like our students, residents to be involved?
Yeah, actually, that's a good question. So, yes, your students and so forth have been invited. I don't have track of their numbers and so forth. I know that it's difficult trying to get the schools and so forth involved with their ongoing programs and we've kind of encountered those difficulties, but the short answer to your question is yes, both schools are involved. And my understanding is both schools are sending some students up there. Thank you for asking that. It's certainly an important part of it as well.
And then the next thing, tax three is the L I D workshops, B M P L I D workshops.
Yes, so be it that has some, you know, everything all kind of some of the same things and reaching out to different educational components. So that's being developed right now. We don't have some dates. Do not have dates as of yet. We reached out to both towns. It was actually there today. What we're looking for is basically, we're going to be doing a Saturday visit where we have some of this informational brochures and stuff, and we're looking for, say, like one of your local nurseries where we can do some outreach to the public and try to share some of this B M P information, green infrastructure and, and L I D educational components. So it's basically outreach to the public where we'd be there with some information or brochures and, and sharing information with anyone that shows up to the location that's chosen. Certainly open for feedback on locations. I'm not I'm not sure if, I don't think the town has had a chance to respond because like I said, it was just this morning. I know we heard from East Long Meadow, one of the nurseries in their community.
Did you got, we've got the covert inspection?
Covert inspection is task four. And the inspections themselves have been completed. It was roughly thirty structures or locations in the town of Hampden and twenty seven structures or locations in the town of East Long Meadow. Those inspections have been completed. The reports are being assembled. We've narrowing down to the priority locations where at least based on conditions of coverage action is needed, not necessarily immediately, but you know, for planning purposes. What that will do is it's going to identify top ten. We'll, we'll share all of the report information with the town of Hampden and we'll share our recommendations for coverage that we think rise to the top ten. I believe we have like twelve or thirteen right now that we're suggesting for the top ten that will be dependent upon feedback from the town. That part is still to be done because we've also been working in all of these things at the same time, times like some of the locations for L I D infrastructure and or the, the pollinator locations. We found those elements to be difficult to find because most of the crossings were at streams and had limited room on the adjacent right away. But we did find some and those were the ones I spoke about earlier.
And all that, and then so you're going to make the final assessment like May of twenty twenty three? Is that it? At the plan?
You are correct. So by May of this year, we'll basically have the draft done so that the draft is in the town's hands. We may, we will either have the tent selector, have an Arizona close to tent selected then. And then when we move in the next fiscal year, that's when we'll be wrapping it up. I don't know that it will take all the way until May of next year to wrap it up, but we knew we couldn't get it done in this fiscal year, so it had to be carried over to the other.
You're going to have information, according to this, you're going to have informational websites, website and that for town and hearings and stuff like that or meetings?
Yes, the town project clearinghouse is up and online, so we've shared that link with the town. I'm not sure where it might be posted on your website, but that's available right now, that website for anyone can go there and find out more about the project and, and download the reports. We sent the website in about December of twenty one.
So we got, we have to get that set up.
You just have to put the link on our site or something, correct?
Yes.
And, and I guess, I guess the bottom line of all this is then we'll be able to apply for other grants for repairing some of the culverts or things like that?
Yes, you will. That's where we'll get to is, you know, each community will get those ten priority locations. And certainly what we'll also look at is which ones package well to M V P grant, you know, which ones contain most of the scoring components to try to help you make a decision which ones to pursue as a grant and hopefully, you know, your top, very top priorities align with those, which they should, right? Because that's what we're talking about, you know, the flooding and damage and property damage needs of the community. So yes, the intent is to set you up for future grants.
Is a grant right, is a grant round available now, is it, is there not? But we're just not quite ready.
Agree that that's where we're at just because we're just in, you know, the early stages and, and the intent was to get there. You know, more for the next grant round than this one that we're in right now.
So in your estimation, we're on budget and on time?
Yes, we're on budget and on time. Yes. A lot of things are happening this month and we got to keep it that way, but we're, we are on budget and on time right now.
Any other questions? Audience? Thank you, Steve. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Appreciate all you're doing for us.
You're welcome. You all have a good evening and summer ahead.
Next item is town council, Calhoun Row. Hi, Ray's Rowley. How are you?
Very well. How are you all?
So just slide that one next to you a little more.
Why did you reach with a printout from the town's G I S system showing the parcels, just to give you a sort of a context? I figured I would start with sort of an outline of the history of how this has gone on. I'll, I'll give you where I'm headed at the start. I'm headed towards, this is a private dispute between two property owners. Okay? All right, so. Alright, so. So, my understanding is that the way that this problem was presented to the town is a landowner. Um, who is in a butter to a, a public way that has. Uh, where the maintenance of the road has been discontinued, has come to the town and asked if the town will. Um, will exert authority over a neighbor. Uh, and that neighbor also abuts this, this public way wherein the town has discontinued maintenance of that. So first of all, have I defined the problem correctly? Okay, true, alright. So, um. So, uh, I have provided you with a map. Okay, that is, as I said, a printout from the town's GIS system. And it has, uh, I've, I've done some coloring for you and it has some, um. If you'll take a look, the, the brown. Color is, that is the long stripe of brown color. That is Stafford Road. Or I guess part of the standing, and then I think it's Saint Germain, which, which forks off, it turns into Stafford Road. You'll notice there's a slight turn on Stafford Road that goes between parcels. I'll call it six dash two and six dash three, okay? That is the start of Howlett Hill Road and Howlett Hill Road is the, is the road that we're all talking about. You'll notice that this, at the start where it turns off from Stafford Road, I have kept the color. It's brown, uh, it's brown, might be orange anyways. Now that is because um, that portion of the road, which is roughly estimated, but does, it, it is. Stop somewhere between six dash two and six dash three, that continues to be maintained by the town of Hamden. Um, when you progress to the blue area. The blue area, that is Howlett Hill Road, and that is the area that the town back in two thousand and six. Voted, or excuse me, the Board of Selectmen voted to discontinue. The maintenance of that portion of the road. Howlett Hill Road um, continues through. Through these parcels to the dashed line, which uh, which is um, on the GIS system. That denotes the border of Hamden and Munson. So this Howlett Hill Road continues on, sort of catches the corner. Of Munson and then continues on down into Connecticut into another, into another community. The other two communities that have, have portions of Howlett Hill Road. Uh, they discontinued entirely. They discontinued not just the maintenance, but also the use of Howlett Hill Road, okay? Um, so that happened prior to two thousand and six.
Just to stop for one second.
Absolutely.
Just for clarification, and I, I think we know the answer, but just so it's, it's out in the public.
Yeah.
That Howlett Hill Road in Hamden does not actually connect into Stafford.
Into Stafford.
It crosses through Munson first before it reaches Stafford.
Correct, that is correct, yes. Yes, okay. Um, so. So, um, going back to, let's say, two thousand and six. In, in two thousand and six. If you take a look at the area that I have colored with a pink hash mark. Okay, and those have labels three. There's a three to the left of Howlett Hill Road and a three to the right of Howlett Hill Road. And then there's also a parcel that is labeled two and that is um, at the bottom. Um, then also there are two, two parcels, three dash three and three dash one, which are colored in yellow. And then finally, there's a parcel that is just white and that is three dash two. All of those parcels that I just mentioned back in two thousand and six were owned by um. Betty and or Fred Markham. Okay, Betty and Fred Markham, uh, through deed research, they basically, you know, at some, sometimes they would transfer the property. Between themselves, but they, but essentially, this, the Markham family owned all of this property at that time, okay? In two thousand and six, as I had stated earlier, the town voted that, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen. Voted to discontinue maintenance of Howlett Hill Road. Uh, pursuant to chapter eighty-two, section thirty-two A. That's a statute that allows. A town specifically to um, to discontinue maintenance. The significance of the town discontinuing maintenance of the road. Is that the town is no longer responsible for keeping the road safe for travel. Okay, and the, the town has no maintenance and responsibility with respect to that section of the road. So, the um. That is different. From a discontinuance of use. A discontinuance of use essentially erases the road. And the road just becomes, it's, it's like it's not there, it's just part of the property, okay? Okay, so, um.
Yeah, I'll stop you one more time.
Sure.
In two thousand and six, everything three dash whatever was owned by one particular owner.
That is correct. And two, which is the also. Okay, so, um. So, the, the road was discontinued. The, the owner challenged. The, the discontinuance of maintenance and that resulted in litigation, which finally wound up. And concluded in two thousand and nine, when the court ruled in favor of the Board of Selectmen and stated it was proper. Um, the process and the procedure that they went through to discontinue maintenance. Okay, um. In. May of two thousand and fifteen. Um, I, I'm just gonna refer to them as the Markhams. Um, the Markhams sold. The, what is in the uh, has the pink hash marks. They sold that property to uh, to a Mr. Schweitzer. Mr. Schweitzer owns that property to this day. Okay, and so now Mr. Schweitzer is also in a butter to the, the um, Howlett Hill Road. Okay, the um, as part of the deed in that road, it says that the um. That the parties shall share the road. Okay, so they've already, they've even built it into their um, into their deeds. Okay, the um, in June of two thousand and seventeen. The, the property labeled three, the parcel, excuse me, labeled three dash two was sold. Um, and then in December of two thousand and seventeen, it's my understanding that an attorney and a realtor. Were a married couple, inquired about their, either their ability or the Markham's ability. To develop the land that was still owned by um. Uh, the Markhams, okay, and that's the yellow parcels, okay? And there, I don't believe that there was any follow-up to that there and, and that just ended. So, um, in September of two thousand twenty-three, yet, three years later. The Markhams sold these two yellow parcels to their, I believe it is their grandson, Joshua. Okay, so, and it is Joshua who has come to the town and asked for help with respect to um, Howlett Hill Road. So, um, the way that this proper, the way that the, the GIS map is marked, it shows Schweitzer owns the pink hash. Joshua owns the yellow and the three dash two was really not involved in the dispute. Um. The Schweitzer is using his property to, I, I, it appears that he. Upon report of Mr. Markham, for Joshua now is Mr. Markham. Um, according to the report of Mr. Markham, they, Mr. Schweitzer is using his land for logging. And he is traveling over um, the um, Howlett Hill Road. And Mr. Markham would like him to stop doing that. The um, the legal status of the parties, when a, when a roadway. Uh, when the maintenance of a roadway is discontinued. Then what that means is, is that the um, the abutters. To that roadway have the right to improve it. As long as they don't impair the use or any of the other abutters. So, they, the town is no longer responsible for the maintenance of the road. The abutters, if they choose to improve it, they may improve the property and they have a right to improve it. But they cannot do so at the expense of other but, others. That is a private. That, that, their ability to do that, it is not an expense of the town, that's a private expense. A, a road that has been. Uh, where maintenance has been discontinued, has been described by the Supreme Judicial Court as a um. It is akin to a, a road that is a private way with public access. Okay, so the public can, can travel over that road. But the town is not responsible to make sure that the um, that the public. Uh, or, or liable if the, if the public travels over that road. And there's any kind of problem, that is on the, the, the landowners.
Go back to the. That they, they could improve the road, but not impede.
So, the um.
Because I think the Markham's claim is that because the burns have been removed.
Yeah.
It impedes their ability to travel because there's washouts and erosion, stuff like that.
Okay, so, the truth or untruth of those facts are dispute. Between the private party. And that, that's sort of where we need to leave off. That's where the town.
Didn't you also say that in the deed, they both wrote to each other, they both gave each other the right to use the road?
Yes.
Which is also in a contradiction to what we've been hearing from one, this is my road to use and they shouldn't be.
Well, I think what the deed says is that. They will grant an easement if the road is discontinued.
Now, there, there are, there are two sources. One is the deed and one is, there's a letter from, um, I believe it is Mr. Schweitzer's attorney. And that um, that uh, states that it, it, that there is. An easement agreement between the parties. Again, we're traveling into the private dispute, so, um, so. Just, I guess, one more thing, I, I, you know, and I don't want to get too much in the weeds. Okay, um, not to.
One thing you mentioned, there was an A and R that happened. Obviously, they did a subdivision of land to create these lots. In my opinion, implicitly, when you do an A and R, you're acknowledging the fact that these lots have access. To a road in good standing. And like you said. This is a road in standing with the town. We're not going to main, maintain it. However, it's in the town's inventory. That's why an A and R is typically granted because we have frontage. And by then selling this land, they implicitly sold land with frontage to another party.
Yes, it is considered um, where if. The difference between a discontinuance of use, a significant difference between um, the discontinuance of use. And the discontinuance of maintenance is when you discontinue maintenance, you do not eliminate frontage. When you discontinue use, you eliminate frontage.
So this gets back to my point, I think Don mentioned about easement thing. I think it's incorrect, even though they may have said we're granting you an easement. I'm sorry, you have frontage on a town road. You don't get granted easement to land you front.
That letter said if the road is discontinued, which would suggest that that land all goes to Markham.
He, here's the thing.
That they'd give an easement to go over.
There is, there, this is a um. Terminology-rich area, and so um, discontinuance, I've been trying, I've, I've been um. You know, I've, I've tried to very carefully distinguish discontinuance of maintenance versus discontinuance of use. Yeah, and the way that I think of discontinuance use is you erase the road. Um, discontinuance of maintenance, you still have a public way. You still have a public way and the public can, can cross. Now, the owners may choose to let trees, whatever they want, grow up within the road. They don't have to maintain, they don't have to maintain it, that's their choice. But, the um. But it, it remains a public way, so it, it, so the significance is, is it retains the frontage.
But. But if public, if, if owner A, you said they could, they, they have to maintain their road, they could maintain their road or make improvements. But they can't impede. So if owner A decides to let a tree grow, and it impedes me as owner B.
No.
User B.
So, so to be passive is one thing, but to actually make an improvement on the road. If that's when um, that would be a distinction. So to take affirmative action. You have certain obligations to make sure that you don't, you don't do it at the expense of your neighbor. You don't impede your neighbor.
So their concern, that Markham's concern is that they remove burns and that it's creating erosion, makes it difficult for them to travel the road.
And, and.
That's a private.
That's subjective.
Right, right.
That, and that's, that's.
I don't think it was.
Well, I didn't go that far because I have a car that I care about. I don't have a company car, so. So, the end, the end, which sounds like, because I don't want you to build the bar anymore, is that uh. It's a private dispute. It's subjective whether they damaged the road enough to be their way or something like that.
Right.
The, the town has had no responsibility to fix the road if somebody damages it.
That is the, that's the entire point.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Yes, go ahead, Chad.
Uh, for legal, um, Ted Jever, um, one of the members of the Conservation Commission. The reason this came to us is that there is some potential for stormwater runoff. Into an environmentally sensitive uh, uh, cold water fisheries brook. Who is responsible for that? That was the main, that was the main reason it came to the town, ma'am, was because of that. Because the road was altered and there's at least some runoff going into that protected brook.
Um, if I recall correctly, I recall some correspondence. Um, where the Conservation Commission, Mr. Markham did consult with the Conservation Commission and um. I, I don't want to speak for the Conservation Commission, but I, I believe. That what I read or my understanding was, is that the Conservation Commission did not have um. It did not see a problem. I could be misstating.
No, we did, we did see a potential problem, yes.
Okay, and so, um, so I am not prepared to address what you could do, but I would assume that that is. If you had stormwater completely running off, completely within the bounds of a um, of two abutting lots. Then it would be similar. Does that make sense?
Uh, I, I guess my question is, is the town totally not responsible on that aspect? Of the environmental um, situation? Is it strictly between the two property owners?
I believe, yes, I believe that the um, the town by not maintaining, by, by voting. Excuse me, the Board of Selectmen by voting to discontinue maintenance of the road. They are no longer responsible for maintaining it and the abutters may maintain it at their, at their choice. And therefore, um. I would have to look into it further. I, I don't want to speak off the top of my head. But um, it is, it is, I believe that it would be the um, private owner's responsibility.
Okay.
If, I mean, I can look up, I can look into that further, but that was not. But that was not the problem, then I'm, I'm, I apologize, that was not the problem, I understood it. I understood it was to just try to get him to. I understood it was to try to get him to, to get, that one neighbor wanted another neighbor to stop using the road.
Yeah, right, but the other thing goes back to what they, what they called the berms that were removed.
Yeah.
Well, part of those berms kept the water within the road. And consequently, there is potential for stormwater runoff into the brook. Because the berms ain't there.
And it did sound at the last meeting that Mr. Schweitzer was willing to work with CONCOM to remediate that situation. Don, if you would,
That's, that's what, that's what they said. We'll, we'll see what the result is.
So is that, that is a problem that's under, there's a plan to solve it?
We asked them for one, we have not heard back.
Okay.
So,
Yes.
We would like, I believe we would like a letter, 25 words or less, summing up your opinion. Summing up your opinion.
Okay.
All right.
Certainly.
Great, understand, I admit it very clear, thank you very much. Thank you, Alex Ross.
All right.
While you're here, you're writing emails for your owners. For a penny and for a pound.
The clock is off.
It's off, you're here.
Also the conservation restriction or,
Conservation,
That has to be done, that's the rule, yes. And, and, and I apologize that that is, has taken me time and I, I apologize.
There's a lot of other things. I will say we did get the first check from Mayor Rusko for their lease payment.
And now, what do you ask, get to hear from another attorney? But he's not billing.
Yeah.
The rate's a lot lower.
Hey Dale? Dale, is this a scout thing?
He's listening in.
Okay, introduce him if you can, if you get a chance, I'd like to.
Sure.
How are you? Oh, this is Mr. Solomon.
Yes, oh great, thank you, I was going to ask you, thank you very much. Great, thanks. Yes.
John, John Flynn, Dan Davenport, regular best in Bob Markham.
Yes, good to be here, thank you very much, board members.
You look younger than the last time I saw you.
That's good.
Bob knows everybody.
He does, and in fact, we, we can do a map of Bob and I, because I've worked, I've worked in the same community he's doing cable. But sometimes before Bob gets there, sometimes after, sometimes when he's there. I've done all three.
He can't, he can't keep a job.
He, he certainly can keep a temporary job, but we don't have a full timeline. Well, thank you, Bill Solomon, cable attorney, a little background.
Bill, tell everyone who works,
Sure.
Say Comcast.
Oh, it's Charter, I'm sorry. I use a, I use a template and I just, I, I know the Charter licenses, I appreciate that, thank you.
This is the operation, which is too bad.
So thank you very much. So a little background, I worked, worked 40 years as municipal attorney, town council in Stonem until I retired. My wife's a town administrator. We have young kids living in Western Mass, so after 30 years, I said I, I move out. Been doing cable TV since 1990. Work with 70 or so communities, I've got well over 100 licenses, they've done charter licenses, Comcast, Verizon, Adelphia, Cablevision, RCN, Time Warner. I love the work. Sometimes they, they say like Larry Bird when signing with the Celtics and it's over at our back. He said, I forgot to tell you, I would have done it for nothing. I do love the work because I believe in community television. I believe in, I do charge, but, but very, very low. I believe in community television. It's an area where towns are still able to meet their needs with respect to community television and access. I see here, you have a wonderful screen. You, are you live, is this live?
We don't have, we don't have community TV here.
Pardon me?
We don't have that.
No, I know, you run government access.
Yeah, Zoom, we do Zoom.
That, that's right. And so, let me give you my sense of, and look through your license. Is there no funding in the license or is there any funding from Charter? I didn't see any funding.
We didn't choose the funding, that would be the extra part of every bill that allows to establish a public access.
Or, or for the town, right. So here's how I see Hamden. And Bob's told me what, you know, what a great community and I live in New Salem, so I love the north, but I love Western and Central Mass in the sense we're open to getting to Western Mass and the end of Central. I, I think you have a great opportunity here to figure out what your needs are. What is the town of Hamden, through its Board of Selectmen or Board of Selectmen? What do you see for the next 10 years? You know, it's a, it's a fast-changing world. COVID, as you know, has changed so many things, including the idea that people at times or often want to be home and partake in their government. In towns that, and even here, I'm sure it's still in Hamden, that it was set in Stonem by representing a Board of Selectmen member at a hearing. If it wasn't for the high, the remote connection between government and the public, democracy would have ended for up to a year. There would have been no interaction, no contact. And so, you know, Mike, I don't know how long you've had the screen or if your, your, your program here has increased in terms of sound or visual. But you'll be deciding for the next 10 years where the town goes. And, and if you decide, as would very well maybe the case, that you'd like to continue the focus or, or on government access or exclusively government access, that, and that, that work could work very well and I'm sure it does work well. But because cable is changing, because there's video streaming, cable is, 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 is changing, subjected to competitive pressures, this is an important license for every town and for Hamden because it, it may be your last cable license. And therefore you want to decide first where you want to go in the next 10 years. What are the things you want to do? Then you want to decide after you, what that goal is in terms of programming. What do you need to do that in terms of facility, the equipment, both now and for a 10-year period? And do you want to implement a franchise fee to pay for that? That's a public policy decision and that's your decision. And one of the things I would want to look at in Hamden is I'd like to see what your cable rates are. And I like to compare that to other charter communities. And, and, and see, see how they stack up. Are you, are you paying a lower cable bill than other communities since you don't currently have a franchise fee? Or is the rate charged to Hamden subscribers such that even without a franchise fee, your residents, charter subscribers are paying as much? And I would want to know that because there was a time in cable where the difference between the franchise fee and no franchise fee was how much the company charged. In other words, that I worked, handled the Amherst license. In Amherst, they had a 5% franchise fee. In Deerfield and Sedlin, which I still represent lately, there was no franchise fee. It's 5% franchise fee, but you know what? Residents in those communities, the subscribers, they paid the exact same amount. So, you know, I always think it's helpful to find out how does your policy decision with respect to whether or not there's a franchise fee affect the actual rates that people pay? That takes some digging, because as you may know, cable companies and they're great, they're great partners, but they, you know, they don't put their rates on the website. They're a little hard to find and you can find out what they are. So I view cable licensing as a chance for any town, no matter how much cable programming they do, to step back and to figure out where you're going. It's a great opportunity to figure that out. And I, I would be here to help you and sometimes bring some folks in to talk with you and use for them, to see where you may want to be in the next 10 years and to figure out a license that works for the board and a license that works for the residents of Hamden.
Lose our contract up.
So it's just two years, but it's, but it's a three-year process. Now, I, I make it a cost-effective process and I don't need, you know, three years to do a license. There are some things you want to do upfront. I'll talk to you about making this very, very cost-effective. But at first, what you, you want to get a little bit of head start to figure out where, where you want to go. So maybe you could talk to me a little bit. Are there some things that you thought about in terms of improving or expanding your outreach to the public? Whether it's additional rooms that you would like to be able to cable cast from or additional buildings? Or, you know, I guess you're hooked, you have a modern system here?
So we, we currently don't have public access in Hamden.
No, you've got an access.
No.
Oh, oh, no. Oh, I see, well, well, you, let me put it this way. Oh, so you're, you're not in the cable channel?
No, not, no, nothing in Hamden is, is,
Oh, okay, so.
Well, we looked at, okay, last time. We looked at that several years ago, where actually some people expressed interest in being on a cable committee. Again, part of the thing was, as was presented at that time, we could fund it through a surcharge in everyone's cable bill, strictly by action of the Board of Selectmen. We as a board did not feel that was appropriate for us to put that supposed to be tax on without having people buy, you know, buy into it. So we looked at that. We also looked at the cost that we knew what Walgreen had been spending on doing their cable access. They have a pretty robust system, but it's not free. And we at that time were not at a point to commit that much money into staging an operation. Thirdly, we really didn't have space for anything. And they had quite a few volunteers that helped. We really weren't seeing a plethora of volunteers flooding the town hall, you know, for different, different activities. So at that point, which was, I think, probably three, four years ago, we're looking at the cable, you know, re-upping, there was no action taken. Yes, by the way, that could happen, but it didn't work into our plans at that time.
Right, and you know, the focus on government was, is, is, is great. And the issue for, for you and for Charter would be whether or not there's funding available for the town for this program.
My concern with that is going forward in the future. I mean, you look at the numbers dropping off that you listed here. A lot of that has to do with people just cutting the cable completely. You know, we're, we're currently exploring options to go fiber optic in town. And when that happens, we're going to look at these numbers potentially reduced by 50%. So at that, at that point, you know, most of those people are going to come off of Comcast or Charter. Got me saying Comcast now.
Yes.
Come off a Charter and they won't be viewing public access, government TV.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting you necessarily do it with the one, do it with the government. And thank you for reminding me, Bob did, that you, you do this over the internet. So the question there would be, and, and even if, and you, where are you now in, right back to home. I said my wife is town administrator in Leverett. Leverett was the first community really in the state that did fiber home and I work and familiar with a lot of communities. Where, where does the town stand on that? Where's that process?
We have our,
Stage.
Excuse me?
Beginning stage.
Right.
We have our second town meeting for a second vote to authorize the MLP.
Right.
Now that'll be coming up in May.
Right. So, so one question would be, again, whether there's a need and interest to see if there's funding available from the cable company for your setup you have now. Now, I do think that if you're, if you're not on the cable system, then it may be that that's not a viable rep. Oh, and it may be then that you would have, if your instance, if you felt that you needed some or wanted some funding, not knowing the financial future from, from, from the cable company. And again, I, I think we would want to look at whether or not you're saving folks' dollars that you hope you are. In other words, there's no guarantee that because you have zero franchise fee, you, you're, the charter subscribers are not paying more. I think it's helpful to look at that.
Right.
And so then, when you understand, you look at that and you have, we have a sense of that, then the question is, is there an interest in getting some funding, even a small amount of funding? And that might entail having a government access channel. In other words, Charter having a channel where people can turn on their TV and see the same thing that people see for YouTube. Why do that? Well, you know, there may be some folks who still prefer watching on TV. And secondly, it would be potentially the nexus for that small amount of funding that you either decide or not decide is something that you would like in exchange for the cable company using your public way. So it's not really a tax. Think of yourself as a landlord. They're paying rent because you have a public way that you buy or take. You police, you maintain, you repair. And just like if someone wanted to use a building, Charter wants to use a building for their business, they, they pay rent. Well, the same thing with a public, and they can charge what they want to their customers. They don't need any, it's not, it's not a tax. The same thing for your public way. Your public way is your asset. And the question is, does the town believe, does the town need and does it believe it's appropriate to get some rent from the cable company under the law, the Cable Act, that's using that asset to provide to the taxpayer, to the taxpayer really?
We don't have any of those assets and if we wanted to,
So I'm saying your asset is the road.
Right, but you're talking about, I think you're going back down the line of like government access.
No, I, I begin with, for instance, potentially, let's just assume that we sit down with Charter and we say, well, you know, this government program on YouTube is, is, is beneficial, I should mention, under the Cable Act, not Massachusetts law, under the Cable Act, community put 5% franchise fee on, and you can use that for anything, because police, fire, your debt, there's no, under the 98 for Cable Act, there's no limit.
Where's that 5% franchise fee going to? Who's paying that?
Well, that's what I mentioned. That's what, you don't know for sure until you look. Because again, an example I gave,
I just want to make sure subscribers aren't going to be paying more for the franchise.
Well, you, we, we, what we don't, what we, what we can look at is to see whether now by having no franchise fee, your subscribers pay less. So let's take this Palmer Charter community. I don't, okay, let's say Palmer's a Charter community. And let's say Hamden has no franchise fee. And let's say, what used to be called basic and expanded basic. Let's say that was $100 a month and there's no franchise. But let's say Palmer has a franchise. And the folks there with the franchise fee pay $100 a month. You'll be able to tell, it takes some work and some knowledge, which I unite some experience in, whether or not, even though you don't charge rent to use the public way, does Charter charge their customers or your residents, do they still charge them as much or more? I worked with the town, went and found out when we looked at it many years ago, they pay more than anyone.
When you say the right use of public way, you're talking about the lines coming down the street?
Yeah, because they're on poles and that's, that's the basis, the basis of compensation to a town is, is using that public way. And under the Cable Act, you could just charge it. Under the Massachusetts law and the Cable Act, it has to be used for cable-related purposes. But many towns, when they get their franchise fee and it goes to access, whether it's run by the town or run by a nonprofit, they use that to stream online. They're, they're gaining compensation from the cable company who's using the way to pay for your communication with the public. But I do think, so the, the, the issues to look at in a town are, one, is there anything different coming forward that would cause the town to decide that, that funding, even if passed on, because every company passes on its costs, even if passed on, because every company passes on its cost to its customers. Is there a reason that you, as a board, feel that in the next 10 years, as we, we look at this, that it may be in the town's interest to have some funding come in for the use of the public way to further the connection, the, the telecommunication connection with the public in a world that's transitioning to more telecommunication or not? So if you decide there's no need or you're not, it's, it's not a possibility of a need. If you don't need the funds, then I think the clear answer is pretty simple. No need to, to, to get into the question of whether or not you want to obtain some funds. But if you decide that there may be things you want to do in different buildings, in different rooms, in different technology, uh, going forward to, to do, let's say, just government access, you know, online even. Then, then the next question, as I said, is I think, let's take a look to see whether by asking for no franchise fee, the, the company is actually charging less. Because in the cable world, there's a thought that the idea that you ask a company for less and they'll charge less, you know, uh, it's, it's, this, this, that's not necessarily true. Well, because it's not something that they, it's not like the tax like they, they, they collected like a sales tax. You charge them and they pick it up. It's totally separate. They pay you to use the public way and they have customers and they collect money from. So it's not like a sales tax. Of course, it's not a tax. So as I said, I think that first you decide, do we need anything going forward? And then you decide if you might, let's see if there's what the impact now is with respect to, uh, their customers, your residents. And then at that point, you can weigh, is there, do you want to have some funds for the company using the public way? Or the decision you made today, which I, I think clearly works, do you want to keep the status quo? And I think that's, this is an opportunity. Um, I do a lot of work in this, having been at town council, working for lots of towns. I worked for the smallest towns, Conway, Gill, represent the vineyard, North Adams across the state. There's nothing I enjoy more than helping a board, firstly, figuring out where I want to eat in town and it's this handy place. But after that, helping a board, the town figure out, well, what do you want to do? And here's some possibilities and, and, because there's not a lot of, there's very few things that give as much opportunity for deciding whether you want to move forward and getting some benefits for the town that make a difference. Because never has this, your communication with the public been more important than right now.
So my concern is if we were to go with, say, a franchise fee, because that was the avenue you're pursuing, how would we see if that would directly affect the, the people purchasing the service? Would their rates change? So with this negotiation that if we were to go with you through Charter, would you be able to negotiate, you know, a cap on the rates for our customers?
Good, good question. And by the way, the very least I do for you is I take your license and the lawyer that I am, I would in five hours make it a license I thought really, you know, was good for going forward and got you the best legal language and protection of your public way and dedication. And I could do that with my eyes closed in five hours. That's happy to do that. On the rate part of it, the answer is that there's no, there's never a guarantee. Remember, some, the question was, do you think, and remember the way business works. If you, if you, if you're, let's say, I'm a plumber and my, my costs go up, can I pass everything on? No, it depends whether I think I can raise my rates and keep my customers. Well, a cable company in the world that exists now, there's a lot of video competition. So there's Hulu and Apple and Disney and Netflix. And in that world, they have, they live, they have more of a market than they used to have. And so they decide whether or not they're going to raise their rate based on their competitive business elasticity, demanding situation. So with that, what you know is the amount of money that you would be collecting is, is minuscule compared to the market decisions that they have to make and that drive that decision. Now, they'll always show it on the bill. Remember, I said in, in Amberst, you saw $5 on the bill. But in the other towns, you didn't see $5 on the bill for the town, but they charged the same amount. You follow, you know, they, so.
So they were passing off that franchise fee.
Right. And so now what we do know is with the, the competition on video, that they do have those competitive demands, that they're not, you know, they can always say in the bill, the town cost me 75 cents. But the real question is, is when you look, is, is that something they're actually charging? We never can be sure about going forward. What we do know is they're less likely now to be able to pass things on because they have more video competition. And what that I'm, I think uniquely able to help you with, not easy, is to, let's figure out, well, are your residents paying less because the town is not charging rent? And if we look and we, you know, get some bills and get some rate cards, and if it turns out that Hampden residents are paying, are paying more, then the discussion with, uh, Charter is, well, why are they paying more? And, and then in that world, you might decide, well, if, if the price that's charged, the rate that's charged, doesn't directly relate to the cost that you impose, well, then you might decide, well, you know what, we're going to impose a cost for the value of our right of way and the company, and the company can decide what it does. So that's, I think, the way.
But my question is, if we impose the cost, you said, say that, that town you were talking about, put the $5 surcharge on the customer's bill. I don't want to, I don't want to see that surcharge on my customer.
Well, you see, remember, they always put it on, here's what they, they can always put it on the bill. Remember, let me show you this story briefly. So you have Amberst and you have Deerfield. And with 5% franchise, I'll use simple numbers. In Amberst, they charged $45 and it was a $5 franchise fee put on, they say, the, the town cost you that. $45. And so you live in Amberst and you see the bill. Well, the town's costing me $5, right? Now, in Deerfield, what do you think the company charged? $50.
And the town doesn't get the $5.
That's going to $5. So that, it, it's, it's not like rate regulation, like a utility, where you, you approve something and it, and it flows to, how they set their rate is up to them. And another company that does this was unable to stop itself from charging more. And so when that town found out that they were paying as much, they said, well, all right, we want a franchise fee too. So what we do know, as I mentioned, is that with video competition, they're not just able to raise their rates willy-nilly. And so what they decide to charge as a rate, they're always saying the bill, that's there. But whether or not they can raise their rate less now than ever before, because it's a competitive market. But what I tell a town is, before we worry too much about this part of it, which is complex, but I can handle it, is first you decide what do you, what do you need and what do you, what are your needs going forward? And is it fair to ask the cable company, or do you want to ask the cable company to, to pay some compensation for using your, your public way? And that's, if you don't have a need, if it's like, you know what, we can do this on what we have, our, our, our tax revenues now and we can be on YouTube and we're fine with our cameras and our, you know, our, our other equipment going forward. And we're, then that's the answer. There's no need to do that. Then I'll just make sure your license. Very importantly, gives you the things that you think you're promised. Cable companies put provisions in here that can nullify what you think you have and promised. And I want to make sure that the promises are promises. And I want to make sure you're protected legally and policy-wise going forward as a separate, separate matter.
So if we were to sign a contract with you, the first thing you'd do is go through the charter contract and see what we got and whether we're getting what we're supposed to get.
Yeah. And I would, I would, I would, between now and June 30th, I'll, I'll do my work for you for nothing. And I'll do that as a courtesy. I'll, I'll, I'll look at, I can mark this up, but it, it's mostly legal ease.
And then we need to decide what we want to do or what we need or think we need.
Right. And for that, what I would suggest is, there's two people. There's a guy, uh, who, a lot of towns, I have him going. Uh, he works for, is a vendor, but he just does it for profit. Uh, and, and he comes in and will meet with whoever it is in the town and go over your equipment and your rooms. You've probably done this already. You may have your own person. But just go over, or what is it in the next 10 years that you, we see is equipment that you might be interested in, uh, for your, your government?
And then video, then you would negotiate with the, with Charter, who?
Yeah. I think the, the process of what you want is going to take a little time. Again, I make it cost-effective. But you're going to need to decide, you might want to reach out to, with a department head meeting. You know, I, I oftentimes have a department head meeting to say, well, are there things that you want to get on, on, to tell the public about? You know, the police chief, I think, with town council, the police chief, the fire chief, the board of health. Or is there messages now that you don't get out because you don't have someone helping you create that? Or you don't have the equipment? So we want to find out how this town, how your town can have the best communication with the public and vice versa without impeding the real life interaction.
And then, and then, uh, and then you're, you're, how long, how long does this process usually take? How many hours? How many billable hours?
Yeah. And, but, so here's what, let me just say that, because they did the numbers. Uh, we're not, you're not going to have anything like that. But in theory, your license, you know, over cable, slow, I think cable is going to be here a lot longer than people think because streaming video can be expensive and there's this and there's that. So, but if you took your current numbers, your license could be worth $850,000 over 10 years. Now, I'm, I'm just.
Now that gave up to the cable.
No, to the town. But, but we're not talking anything like that. So what I see is step by step. Uh, I see the, I've gone, I've gone over the license and I can make an outline of things I would change. I'll, I'll do that as a courtesy with the town. So the next step would be, uh, to figure out what you want to do. And I would say, you know, let's say three meetings. Uh, you know, like if it was, uh, you know, three hours. So let's say 10 to 12 hours for that. Um, and then from there, then we would negotiate with Charter. Now Charter is not a community, Charter is not a company that's looking to move licenses quickly. They see the world changing and they take their time.
Oh, you gotta, you gotta hear your phone right out of here.
So, so that, 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 you know, that can take a little bit. But let's say that took, gosh. What do you think, again, 30 hours? So if it was, so 50 or 60 hours, and I'd be happy to give you sort of a, 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 a kind of cap, soft cap or even more. I said, I'll just do it for this and then we'll get it done. And like I said, I love this work and I, I can give you my Bob Markle ring. Uh, so let's say we, let me, just try to put it together. But we would do it as we went along. So as we, and, and then the other work would be my little harder, trying to figure out what your residents pay. So let's say altogether, let's say it was, uh, 60 hours. And that's, you know, I'd be working more than that. But, and this, my lowest rate of, do it, do it times like 180. So that's 10,000. So let's say I would try to get this done for you. In the perfect world, we try to get it done for $4,000 or so. But as we go along, you know, you're going to make the initial decisions, whether or not, first off, whether there's any interest in getting compensation. And if there's not, that's it. I then will, in a very easy way, put together an excellent license that's fair, but that's good for the town, that protects you. That's, that's, like I said, a lot of, I'm happy, uh, uh, and I'm happy to put most of that together before we get to July and I'll just do that for you. So, so I think the first part, I think we're talking about 20, 20, maybe 20 to 25 hours to figure out the needs and the, me, the hard part, figure out the billing. On that, I'll be, what I need is I'm going to, going to reach out to people in other communities with your help too and myself, because we need to get people's actual bills, because they just unfortunately don't put this on. You need to see what it is they actually charge in a community. Um, so it, it, you'll make the decisions as you go along. But at the end of the day, for whatever that hour of hours are, I'll have for you an excellent license that I negotiate with Charter. Even if it has, it continues the current process, which works well. But that protects you legally and policy-wise to make sure that the town's legal interests are protected.
It seems as though in the town where I live, that the cable company, which is Comcast, charges a disproportionate amount of the bill for internet service. And less than they should charge for the programming. And I assume that that is set up that way as a disincentive for getting rid of the programming and just buying internet service from them alone.
They charge more for what now? For?
They, they, if you say to them, I don't want, I don't want the programming anymore. I just want internet service. Their charge for internet service is relatively high.
That's right.
As a proportion of bill.
And I'm also proud that I have the only license in state that, that, we're so with another company, that protect the town from the cable company changing what the nature of how much is cable and how much is something else. It used to be that cable was, let's say, $80 and internet was 30. Well, if a, if a company could just unilaterally change that, because you only get your percentage on cable, they can, oh, it's only 20. So my licenses protect communities by applying the gap rule and looking at individual prices. But even individual prices are a little bit, you know, in the cable world are not, not everything they appear to be. So, uh, in, in your license, uh, if we do have compensation and, and, and we'll give an example of capital. Sometimes what I say is, there's operating in this capital, but let's say capital dollars. So if, if we had, um, you have, you have 1,000, uh, one, let's say 1,300 subscribers times, let's say it was, uh, $60. Wow, that's a lot. 1,300 times 60. All right. So that's $78,000. So if, 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 assuming they pass something through, they actually charge, you know, and it, and let's assume that's the case. At $60 per subscriber over 10 years, that's 50 cents a month. So the question would be whether your residents as a whole believe that the programming that you'll have going forward is worth 50 cents a month. If it is, then you'll be in a position where rather than having to ask taxpayers to pay for that equipment, for your equipment and replacement, and that you'd have $78,000 that, that was 50 cents a month. Now, the, in the old, in the world we live in now, in most places, this is the great part about doing cable now. People recognize how important that is, that, that if they want to see a meeting, they can see a meeting. So, so, but those are your decisions, not mine. But, um, but, but yes, we would, would take it step by step. And first we figure out where you want to go. And I, I'd help you and I'd get a little smaller.
All right. Give us a lot to think about.
Sure.
So, uh, we'll discuss it and probably next week we'll talk about it some more and help, I'll let you know.
That's great. It's great to hear. Appreciate that.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming though.
And thanks to Google, I had all, all backwards.
Before, before the next thing, I could ask, uh, Dale, somebody here attending?
Sure. Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Jane Maris and I'm Blackberry Scouting and I assist senior producer here, uh, 25999. And I'm, uh, attending here today because I'm looking at a part. Where my patients have suspension.
Good to have you. Pam, Pam will recall, we used to get, gosh, seemed like at least one a year.
Scouting is a great thing. My son is an Eagle Scout. You know, uh, I hope you make it there.
Thank you.
One way.
Both ways. Hopefully this vote will discourage you.
Thank you, Dylan.
My, my son right now is in Bears as well, so.
Very good. Ready for him, he's good.
Uh, landfill monitoring program.
Uh, basically, this is our annual vote from, uh, Bill Fabry for monitoring the landfill. Using contest, the price really hasn't gone up much. You'll see that's, uh, right around 10,000. Obviously well within our budget, leaving cap space just in case the state. Leaving cap space just in case the state would come in with some requirement which would possibly require.
This is part of the on landfill.
Just drop, I mean, every year they do take a couple tests off, so at some point.
Will there be at some point where this just drops off because of the testing?
Some point, but I mean, it has dropped. Unfortunately, the number of tests have gone down. Go up, so it's a. Right, maybe they had a hundred tests before and now we're down to seven, however, those seven tests cost as much as a hundred.
So this is a board of health issue.
Correct, I didn't take a motion to award the contract to Bill Fabry.
Uh make a motion to entertain, make a motion to award the contract to Bill Fabry for events.
Second. Streetlights.
Oh, our board of helping here. I request for a variance for twenty Baldwin Drive. Uh reduction separation of the test, reduction by two uh feet than normal. Four, six, six, I think, as recommended by the board of health agent.
Second.
All those in favor? I appreciate the board, same with myself, like, don't pretend to know more than the health agent does, if they think it's good. Who are we deciding?
So they do. Okay, streetlights.
You should have.
Is this yet a different list?
It's it's the original list that was compiled by uh Charlie Seeger. And Jeff Beatty has not uh now gone out and identified the polls. So we can get that information to National Grid.
This is what I said before, remember, we originally were talking roughly twenty lights and then all of a sudden we saw that. So this is back to. This is something I believe, we're working with Pam and also Pam and National Grid, you know, this is something we easily afford inside the budget we have now. Unless of course the state approves the four hundred percent rate increase that that they almost asked.
So what's the next step on it?
I still would like to uh Pam and Bob, I believe, are investigating the cost of buying. She likes and that would be something that could be paid by ARPA, which would decrease our annual bill as well. We would just be responsible for the electricity and possibly subdue, sub the maintenance.
I think with the change out that we just did, that the cost is going to rise.
It could be, but we should get that number.
So we're just gonna do. Okay, annual county meeting warrant, anything new on there?
Uh yeah, you would ask last week that we move the citizen petition higher in the warrant, so it's now article five.
And then I will get the uh numbers for the enterprise fund uh to you this week for discussion next week.
Right, and I did send out a message asking for community preservation.
I saw that, that's something, I believe Doug is working on scheduling uh meeting for that. I have a request from him, the housing authority for CPA money, I think he's got a couple others.
Selective reports.
So quickly, um I know it was floated around, I'd like to ask the boards to support the request to. Put those the flags on Main Street for Eddie Calvin's funeral on Friday. Eddie donated all the flags that we see at the at Fourth of July Memorial Day, et cetera. Been a town resident for years, supporting everything that we did, and I think it'd be a tremendous honor. Tremendous statement by the town to honor his memory, and that'd be for this Friday.
This would be an exception from uh.
The flag isn't there. That'd be next, Bob, if you could reach out to even find out where we stand with replacing the town flag.
I have no problems.
Okay, so Bob and I coordinated with the.
That's a motion, that's a motion.
Bob and I coordinated with Mark, uh, you know.
Do they, are the ones that we have? In good condition?
They are, we also have some spares as well.
They're in good shape, I mean, they leave them up for a little bit and.
A few years back, it used to be we put them up just for the things, and then I made a motion to basically keep the period from. The Memorial Day, through Flag Day to the fourth, I mean, catch all of them just. Alright.
Selective reports.
Coming up to the start of the month, so we're gonna have our COA meeting next week, uh planning board moving along. So business as usual, basically.
Business as usual, we've got water commission meeting next week, uh I think parks are actually meeting Tuesday as well.
That budget request, uh, John.
I haven't seen it yet. From Bob Flock.
Earlier today, at the request of the superintendent of schools, uh Bob and I met with them and we met and. Two members of the advisory committee were there, and the issue was that they sent us a assessment for the. No, capital assessment, for the switches. And what's gonna happen with the settlement will happen at the town meeting is that the board of uh advisory committee would recommend that the sixty thousand be removed. From the assessment that we get, and we pay for it with ARPA funds, the sixty thousand with ARPA. That's what the original agreement was, and then we we took it out because they did it as an assessment. So they're gonna change the assessment, and we're just gonna agree to do it as, we wanna agree to do it with the ARPA funds, sixty thousand, ARPA's sixty thousand.
Who wants to agree to?
We wanna agree to it.
We did though, but we also talked about not doing from ARPA, look, and I'm all for supporting the school, here's my one quick point.
The board of the advisory committee was very adamant that they didn't want an assessment.
And I agree with that too. I agree with that, oh, I'm saying to me, this is, the network switches is part of the budget. I'm sorry, you know, that's like, what's next, okay, hey, there are five classrooms that need new chairs, let's assess the town for that. I'm happy with, the town should pick up part of the roof, the town should pick up part of the parking lot, the town should, the structure part. Just this, the network switch part bothers me. Inside the budget, and Don, I go back where you said, you've got E and D at the max, you can afford.
Well, they they, they made the E and D they wanna use for uh, what was they said they want the E and D for? Oh, they were gonna put a large, oh, what happened with the E and D was that Wilbraham didn't wanna. Took, lowered their thing by a hundred nineteen thousand dollars, so they wanna use the E and D for that, which would lower our assessment a little bit too.
But theirs was eighty-nine, or is other one twenty?
So then they had put in this capital assessment and the advisory committee was adamant against the capital assessment. And so, but they didn't wanna get the switches done. So.
And I'm all for the capital part, I just disagree with the characterization of network switches as capital. It's like if they have, and correct. No, no, but you can see where I'm coming from is like, this is the cost of doing business. At my office, we replace four computers a year, it's not capital, it's just.
So anyhow, well, at their meeting, I said to them, I would bring it to the board to see if they would do our part. I don't know how we're gonna pay for their two hundred and forty thousand, please.
It's been in my mind for discussion next week.
Uh and the other issue is that the lower, they wanna talk about the lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. Wants to rent some rooms to learn virtues, and they wanna go look at them and see if they can rent them and all that kind of stuff.
Educational related.
They'd be renting them from us. Yeah, yeah, they would do it the same way when when they closed Memorial School, they 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 rent. It's just that's the very beginning phases.
Speaking of money, I was chatting with Chris the other day, and he was questioning, did the hundred thousand tree money ever come in? He said he hasn't seen that check actually come into the town.
We followed up on that almost two months ago.
I I remember Dana saying he wasn't going to do a thing unless he knew that money was there.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, we've all, not probably speaking at the time, the state's promised the dollar and not, you know, there's a picture of a dollar.
Yeah, well, we're getting to a point where. This has gotta come in the door before June thirtieth, otherwise it counts against free cash, so.
As an earmark, so that's, I mean, his concerns that we're gonna spend money and all of a sudden save for Nate's uh, oh, we didn't clear it time. How much uh trouble did we, not trouble, but the stuff about commitments a couple years ago, cause they were bogged down, that passed it into a further fiscal year. If you were my follower.
Well, we have a contract signed for the money, so they have committed, they've given us the money, the question is, need to get it in the door before we.
Committed to a hundred percent funding for regional transportation.
Well, now they have money, they don't.
Alright, town administrator's report.
Okay, um emergency communications package, uh we've been using Rave. Wilbraham, where we have our dispatch, obviously, is using Blackboard Connect. I checked with the town administrator, I don't have a quote yet on Blackboard Connect, so I. Recommend we take this up next week, I did ask Tony what they're paying over there, but. Uh there's a process which I've started to get a quote from Blackboard Connect for a town of our size.
I would just throw it out there, having used both, like I said, we used to use Blackboard, it to me was a lot easier to use.
Oh, it is, absolutely.
It's what they're using, we're, that way we'd be consistent in regional as well. You know, the the money is pretty close, I think we should make a change.
I've used Blackboard Connect and I agree, it's it's much easier. As you know, I sent out today that uh a message that uh we did apply. For uh state funding to replace the windows in this building. We counted them, there are upstairs twenty-five of these large windows, ninety inches tall. Uh plus two medium sized windows, plus two small windows and and two very small, thirty-one windows in the upper level. That doesn't count these, by the way, doesn't count these, so um. We asked Ty and Bond for an estimate of the cost of doing replacements. Uh like the windows that we have, they'd be double hung and they would be of the same material and they would meet. The guidelines of the Secretary of Interior. And so we would not have any difficulties or questions from the Historic Society or Historic Commission.
Well, that that was my question, Bob, and when you said the guidelines, why are we constrained that because?
This is not, this is not a designated historic building. But in talking with uh some residents and so forth, the people who come into the building. Uh the sense was that we wanna replace the windows with the kind that we have, basically same material and so forth. We're not locked into the secretary's guidelines, but I then asked Ty and Bond for an estimate. I think the estimate is generous. And so their estimate is over five hundred thousand dollars. So the earmark that I applied for could go as high as two fifty, so I've asked for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I sent that out, sent the re- the message that I sent to the, uh to Senator Lesser's office, uh to you today. I have no idea whether or not they'll give us that much money, but um. That linked with some community preservation funds, plus I think a lower cost, I think could could get the project done and and. I was upstairs uh in the library making the count for these windows back last week when um. It it was a cold day, and I can tell you that it's very drafty there, and I think the library employees have a legitimate complaint. That on the cold days, it's not at all comfortable, uh even though the heating system is good, there's a lot of air infiltrating.
I think it's a valid point, but as you said, I reached out to Ty and Bond after I got your estimate, I said seventeen thousand dollars a window? And what she said was, well, we were just given this a little while ago, we just finished a project. Up in maybe Brookfield, something like that, with a similar age building. But an onsite visit they felt would bring much tighter pencil for the whole.
And and they they're cautious because they said, we don't know what we find when we take the old windows out.
There you go, maybe some foundation work and stuff like.
Who knows?
Now, one quick point, I haven't been here before, keep in mind, the windows on the bottom floor were replaced with much more modern windows. So I think maybe there is some type of middle ground that could be.
I think there can be, yeah, I didn't make any commitments. Or on that regard, I just said that we'd like to replace them with similar windows, they have to be custom made.
Or you could throw another lump of gold, um you could throw another lump of gold on the burner, crack it.
Before we go on, I I just, I have a problem if we're gonna be dumping that kind of money into windows, but we don't even know. The longevity of this building, where that goes and that stands as far as mechanical, structural, ADA. You know, are we gonna be putting, if 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 this quote anywhere near that, you know, three hundred thousand dollars on top of the grant to replace the windows?
But now you're into, I think we talked before, that thirty percent or twenty percent of window, you know, type thing. Now you have to rip the entire, to get it up to code, and this on top of mechanical issues.
And then we pigeonhole into fixing this building at a million, two million, who knows how much.
Wouldn't the improvement of the windows make the the building more valuable if it. Something else, you know?
Well, I mean, when I asked the board, it seemed like that was your consensus that we should look for windows.
Oh, yeah, we started talking twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Um and this I guess dovetails into, you know, you're you're reaching out to different firms, I know that. Uh we've, we touched base with Marroy.
Roy Brown today.
Roy Brown as well, you got this, okay, and Carl from Marroy is going to, you know, reach back as well.
Dietz and Company also have asked to.
To do the assessment.
Give us a, give us a quote. To assess the bill.
Alright, the cable guy we.
Cable guy we've just talked to, uh we're also uh moving ahead with the shared. That's uh conservation agent arrangement, I just thought I'd bring this to you, it came today. This is the PVPC, uh DLTA grant. In effect, they get a chunk of money every year from DLTA, and then you have to request them to use some of that money. For a project for your town, and so Munson Log Meadow and Handen will use. Up to fifteen thousand dollars in grant funds, basically to steer this process.
And that's this year, and in the future?
That's now.
No, I know. Well, pay the shared person after that.
So we don't have a grant. For the shared agent. This is a a process of putting together an agreement among the towns to have a shared agent. And to contract with that agent for a certain number of hours that we think would be appropriate. Uh we will have to pay, we had, one, we'll have to pay a proportionate share of the of the salary of the agent. If we get there, you know, if we get to that.
That's great, typically a lot of those things down are billed back to the applicant.
So. That's where we are, the small bridge program for South Road uh was submitted and um. Should have a decision on that, um setting up the community compact grant for fiber optic reparations. I I did uh have a discussion, initial discussion and meeting on on the whole green communities program. Uh on the thirtieth of March. Uh still have to put some things together to bring to the board for your approval or disapproval. Uh what typically happens with this and other grant programs from the state. You have to come up with a plan, they give you a planning grant, you you plan for what you need to do. To improve energy conservation for town, for municipal buildings. And then you're eligible for grants annually for up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars to. Bring down your costs for energy, so that's where we are. Um incidentally, I had a discussion today with the chief of police, one of, you have to adopt five different. Criteria as part of the program, one of them is. criteria as part of the program. One of them is that where appropriate, uh, you would purchase hybrid vehicles, not for cruisers, not, not for patrol cars, but for example for an administrative car. And in the discussion today with the chief, I was shocked to find out that half the fleet, including patrol cars in Wilbraham, are hybrids. And that a sizable portion of the fleet in East Long Meadow are hybrids, they're using them for patrol. I said, really? And they said, well, we don't chase people a hundred miles an hour anymore. Um, and so I had a hybrid, I was getting in the cold months, like forty-five miles per gallon, and in the warm months, fifty-five miles per gallon, so that, certainly with administrative, uh, vehicles, the court vehicle and, and the chief's vehicle down the road, that would save significant money for the town on, on gas purchase. Particularly at this time, uh, it would be anyway, so more about that later. Letter to Lester's office. The senior center is going to hold a booster clinic this month for those who wanna get a booster shot, or who wanna get your second booster shot, so, against COVID. Uh, and the town's grant application for an AED device to replace one of the older ones that we have, has been approved. I have two other items to, uh, for the board. I did get from the fire chief the proposal for the generator, thirty-two thousand two two four, I believe you've already approved that for ARPA. Also, the chief is interested, I'll share more information later on this, he just came in today. He's interested in, in fourteen thousand six to replace the radios in, in the two cruisers.
Chief of Police?
Yes. And he's got a, he just got a quote today from Marcus, so I'll share that with you.
Why does he need to replace radars and cruisers?
Getting older, and
Seven thousand dollars for for radios?
Well, there's a lot of other parts to it, but
License and
Yeah.
Provisioning for the radios.
But there again, he's looking for ARPA funding for that.
Well, a question while, while we're on that topic, um, I spoke to Tony Gentile this afternoon, and he had mentioned that there was contingency money left over from the radio upgrade, when we did the police dispatch upgrade. I don't know how much it was left over, but they were thinking of trying to use the, the contingency money for the fire department to upgrade their radios so they can have better communications with surrounding towns, which they currently don't have. So, I don't know if contingency money would be for this as well or not. Topic of discussion.
That's
Anything else? Would like to go into executive session to discuss, um, storage facilities lawsuit, as would be detrimental to our litigating position.
So moved.
Not return to executive, not return to regular session.
So moved, as the chairman stated. John, when I
Tell them what I heard.